Item C, adopt a resolution authorizing establishment of a Rebuild It Green incentive program for Crestmore-Glenview area homes and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Gillaran Energy Management in an amount of $157,426 for green building energy consultation.
Thank you and good evening once again. As you stated, there's basically two things before you on this item. A is the establishment of a green building grant program for the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood, and B is a consultant contract related to the technical aspects of implementation of that grant. I'll give some of, before turning it over to Tony Rossi, an associate planner with our department, I'll give some of the background on sustainability in San Bruno as well as in the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood. So, as the council knows, the pipeline that exploded on September 9th was a natural gas pipeline. And, natural gas is both a finite resource that provides energy to businesses and homes, but is also one that pollutes on both a local and global level. And, given it's a finite resource, it's not sustainable to rely on that for the long term. So, with that in mind and other sustainability practices in mind, the council adopted a number of sustainable policies within the general plan and other policy documents. And, some of these were related to green building. And, as the council knows, the first implementation of our green building policies was the adoption of the Green Building Code earlier this year, on January 1st of this year. And, in fact, the council decided to adopt Tier One of these green building codes, which requires slightly more sustainable practices for building new homes. And, green building is a broad term, but what it basically means is you build your home with conservation in mind, with efficiency in mind, and in some cases with production of onsite energy in mind, so solar panels and things of that nature. As the council also knows, a majority of homeowners in the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood are rebuilding, and a number of these homeowners have expressed an interest in rebuilding green. About a month after the fire occurred, a well-known nonprofit called Global Green approached the city with the idea of rebuilding these homes in a more sustainable way. And, they got a grant from Silicon Valley Foundation for $100,000 to begin development of a green building incentive grant program for these homeowners within the Crestmore-Glenview neighborhood. Along the way, we were keeping PG&E in the loop about the cost of this program, and this initially came in, the initial costs were quite high, and therefore PG&E asked us to work with Global Green to reduce those total costs. In the end, because of a number, for a number of reasons, mostly the cost, as well as how the grants would be given to the homeowners, we had to terminate our relationship with Global Green. Unfortunately, at that time PG&E told us that they could no longer financially support the program because the program was contingent on Global Green's involvement. Given the homeowner interest in rebuilding green and developing a grant program, staff has continued to work on this and has developed this grant program for the city council's consideration. Gillaran Energy Management is a company that was initially working under Global Green. They've had established connections with a number of homeowners already and have done an excellent job in making recommendations to rebuild green. So, those are the two items that are before you tonight, and I'll turn this over now to Tony Rossi to go over what the green building grant program entails as well as Gillaran Energy Management details.
Good evening. Try and be brief and non-technical. But, what I do want to cover is just the proposed program and then how the proposed scope of services by Gillaran Energy Management are envisioned currently. In essence, Rebuild It Green would be a technical assistance program for homeowners. It would provide green building expertise by Gillaran Energy Management as well as onsite construction, trouble tasking, any issues that come up. Gillaran Energy Management would be available to resolve if it was green building related. And then, the Rebuild It Green program would also offer a grant for rebuilding with sustainable The typical energy efficiency upgrades for homes, when you think about sustainability, relate to a couple of different things. You've got an efficiency component and you have a materials component. On the material side, it's sourcing sustainable woods, cabinetry that doesn't off-gas, things that improve the indoor air quality. And, on the energy efficiency side, you have techniques that improve the performance of a home related to how much natural gas or electricity they require. With the Rebuild It Green program as proposed, we would be recommending improvements to things like insulation, windows that are double glazed or triple glazed, heating and cooling equipment that's very efficient, as well as the potential for solar photovoltaics. If the homeowner chooses to participate, the idea is that the program wouldn't delay construction, wouldn't delay the process, and that it would really empower the homeowners and their construction team to make the right choices that make sense from a green building perspective. So, kind of a custom-fit program for individual homeowners that have been affected. At this point, it's been designed to help any of the homeowners that lost their home as part of the explosion, so the 38, 39 homes that were completely destroyed. In order to qualify for the program, staff's recommending that any home that's built and performs 35% more efficient than the standard home built in California would qualify for a base grant of $25,000. I guess, put another way, if the home uses 35% less energy than a standard code-built home in California, they would qualify for the grant. The way we'd measure this 35% threshold is using something called a Title 24 analysis, and it's a fairly standard report that all building permits are required to submit upon application. And, what it does is it measures the proposed energy use of the home and the types of materials that they would be using related to insulation and heating/cooling equipment, and basically gives you a baseline understanding of how much energy that home would use. So, the Title 24 would say this home uses 20% less energy than a typical home in California. And, what we'd like homeowners to do is design their home to be 35% more efficient, or use 35% less energy than a standard home in California. The Rebuild It Green program would make recommendations that make that 35% threshold possible. And, the reason 35% keeps getting repeated by me is it serves as a really good baseline parameter for not only statewide grants that are available for new homes that add solar, but also it serves as a really good efficiency, baseline efficiency if a home decides to add solar to their property. I think it's important to note that the way that the Rebuild It Green program has been proposed, it would be three tiers. You'd have a base grant proposal, 35, if you just designed a home at 35% efficiency, you'd be eligible for a $25,000 grant. If the homeowners decided to add solar to their home, they'd be eligible for additional grant monies. 50% of all of the home's energy needs provided by solar would qualify them for a maximum grant of $45,000. And, if a homeowner decided to provide 100% of their energy needs, they'd qualify for a $65,000 grant. A number of homeowners have expressed really deep interest and connection to green building, and so the Rebuild It Green program has also proposed something called a green building bonus. What that would do is offer an additional $10,000 grant if the home was LEED certified. And, LEED certification, if you're not familiar with it, is sort of the industry green building standard nationwide. And, it's a fairly in-depth application process and requires fairly substantial improvements to both the indoor air quality of the home, but also the way the home performs on an energy level. And, so, staff's proposing that that be an additional incentive if homeowners so choose to take it. All those grants, if a home were to build and meet 35% threshold and add 100% of their energy needs via solar and become LEED certified, you'd be eligible for a maximum grant of There's a couple issues I want to cover as far as verification and participation, just real briefly. Gillaran Energy Management would be our boots on the ground for verification of these measures, as well as appropriate participation in the program, and, as I mentioned, be available for troubleshooting. Homeowners' participation would be a fairly simple process where we would enter into some type of memorandum of understanding, just to let the homeowners understand the work plan, the efficiency upgrades that are going to be expected by their architect and contractor, as well as give them a really clear understanding of the reimbursement schedule for the grant program. Staff's currently proposing that 50% of whatever grant they're aiming to qualify for is provided at the beginning of the project, sort of to cover those upfront costs, and 50% would be covered, or the remaining 50% would be retained until all the green building construction was complete. Staff's estimating that 30 homes may participate in the Rebuild It Green program. Of those 30 homes, perhaps 10 may choose to add solar, and of the 30 homes, we're estimating that five homes may pursue some type of LEED certification. Total cost impact of the Rebuild It Green program is just over $1 million, if you consider all of the eligible grants possible for 30 homes participating. And, there is an attached budget in the staff report, I'm happy to dig into that if you have any questions. Gillaran Energy Management would be our partner in this project. They would serve as staff extension, working under the direction of the committee of development director to administer the verification side, but also really to provide design expertise and be available for onsite meetings and meet with interested homeowners, architects, contractors onsite or within City Hall. If LEED certification was desired, it's a fairly in-depth process. Gillaran Energy Management has a team that is well-versed, they've got 20-plus years of experience doing specifically green building, design, and verification. And then, really, they'd also provide any additional services needed related to green building. Cost impact for Gillaran Energy Management's scope proposed would be just over $150,000, and that would cover 30 homes participating and in-depth participation by Gillaran Energy Management in all 30 of those homes, design and development. Total cost of the proposed Rebuild It Green program and the Gillaran Energy Management scope is just over $1.2 million, and this would be the cost impact on the city's trust. That's hopefully a brief summary, but I'm happy to answer any questions related to the program.
Any questions for Tony? It was brief and not too technical, thank you.
We appreciate that.
I do.
Irene?
Thank you. I understood what you said, and I appreciate the brief and not too technical. I have a question about why there's not more interest from the homeowners and more maybe push from us or you about people adding solar. I understand the other pieces about the design and all that, if you are working on sustainability with construction materials and cabinets and all those kinds of things, but to add solar doesn't seem to be that kind of a design problem, but I don't know. So, that's my question. And, if it's not a design problem, what can we do to encourage more people to add that to their list?
So, I believe what it is, is the solar panel aspect of it is just another hurdle for people to get over, and there's a lot of people that want to move in their homes right away. So, doing some of these revised Title 24 calculations to build in, to get them up to 35%, might not take quite as long as if you add solar panels as well. So, I think it's just a timing aspect, there may be more interest in the end, and if it was, you know, the council's suggestion, we could promote that angle a bit more. There's, as Tony mentioned, there's basically two things you want to do. First, you want to aim at conserving energy, and that's getting people up to 35%. And, once you conserve that energy, then you could focus on producing energy within a home that won't waste it. So, yeah, I mean, that could be something that staff focuses on more if that's what the council wishes.
Excuse me, before we move on, I still don't understand the design part, because if you have a home now and has a roof on it, you can add solar paneling. I know there's connections and you have to do this and that, but you live in your home anyway, so explain that part to me.
Yeah, it's just something that we've, it's just based on our conversations that we've had with the residents so far, that's where the interest has been, has been at the 35% level and not at the solar panel level. We haven't really dived into it with people, asking them exactly why they're not as interested in it. My guess is that it's part, you know, part of it is a psychological thing of having to do one thing extra of getting into your home, and that they just don't want that additional hurdle. But, I can't speak for all of the homeowners, but that's just been, from talking from the homeowners so far, more people have been interested in that 35% than have been interested in the solar panel aspect.
I'm sorry, you still haven't answered my question. If you can live in your house now and add solar paneling, why can't the people build their house, get the things in, and add solar paneling? Why is there, would there, why would there be a delay in getting into your home?
Yeah, I don't think there would be a delay.
Okay, so...
Let me just see here. If you're asking, so this is an incentive program?
No, I understand.
And, if the interest is to provide, to get more solar, then perhaps it's an issue of providing a higher level of incentive or something. It's clearly, I don't think the director immediately understood, there's no, you're not going to delay somebody getting into their home, but for whatever reason, we're not experiencing this high level of interest from homeowners to go to that level. Maybe it's an incentive issue, maybe it's a complexity issue. I'm not sure we know what it is, but we could certainly explore that further with some of our homeowners and try and figure that out.
Okay.
Does that answer the question or not?
Not really. Let me divide it up. Is there a design issue for someone building a new home if they say, "Oh, solar, okay"? What is, why would adding solar cause anyone to delay getting into their home? Or, is it a perception on the part of the homeowners? And, if it is a perception on the part of the homeowners, I for one, I don't know what the rest of the council wants to do, I for one think we should work really hard in getting over that perception and explaining that solar is whatever, I mean, how, whatever it is, which you haven't said yet.
Well, maybe it's just a cost issue.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, part of it is that when you're rebuilding a home, it's pretty easy to wire the home up and then put the solar panels on top. So, I think part of it is just a perception thing. So, I think we could work harder as staff to get people over that perception that there could be any delay and promote the solar panel aspect of this more than we have.
And, I was jumping ahead and thinking, if it's a cost issue, then we might want to re-look at the incentives as well. But, clearly, it may be something that we need to look at more carefully, because I'm not sure we know precisely, and we haven't really tested that in detail with our conversations with homeowners. Is that correct?
To some degree, we have, but we haven't fully promoted the solar panel aspect of it, and we could promote that aspect of it more and, you know, educate people that, hey, there won't be a delay, these are the things you could do, you know, to build solar panels into your home from the start.
Okay, I would for one like us to do that and do it in such a way that it doesn't cause more delay, just you don't need to come back to the council and cause another month of delay, since we won't be meeting again in December, so...
Absolutely.
That's my question so far.
Okay, any other questions? Ken?
Mr. Chair. First, let me welcome back Mr. Rossi, it's good to see you. Good presentation. I should just clarify, I am designing my first home after, with this new code, and after 28 years, now I am having to relearn your Title 24. Title 24 prior to Green Building Code was a compliance issue. It was windows, a certain U-value, a certain amount of insulation, and building inspector comes in and inspects it, and you're good. Now, we're a lot more complicated, and I think it's good that we have this consultant on hand. And, in answer to my colleague's question, is that yes, I think this consultant should go over all the possibilities with these new homeowners, these hopefully 30 homeowners, you know, in their planning. But, I do believe it is, with my experience, it is a cost issue. We're talking about a base system of about $25,000. And, my experience with working with some of these tragic residents is that they're trying to determine where they're going to put their money in their new home. And, even though they're going to get what ultimately is going to be a nice, really nice, hopefully a dream home, they're not, they're going to have to cut some corners. And, it's nice to have these incentives. So, I guess back to your, since this is a city-sponsored grant program now with money from, I guess, from the trust fund, can you tell me, based on, I believe there's about 11 homes that have applied and everything, are they able to achieve the 35% fairly easily? Because that's a big number. When you're talking about homes that were designed prior to Green Building Code that were, I guess, are at a zero base, now we're telling them, you know, everybody else is at 15% with the new code, and we're asking them to go another 20%, where are they getting that?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. So, let me add a couple of things that hopefully will help clarify. Like Aaron mentioned in his presentation, build a new, if you build a new home in San Bruno, you already need to comply with the Cal Green Tier One, so you're performing 15% better than an existing new home anywhere else in California that's not under Tier One. So, asking them to jump another 20%, that gap is really what the grant program is meant to help resolve for homeowners that are interested in the program. So, there's a number of incremental costs related to not just the purchase, but the design, the coordination time. And, for homeowners that want to participate, who are under construction, it does depend on how far they are along in construction, whether it's easy or difficult to meet that 35% threshold. If your walls are still open and you haven't put sheet rock up, there's a lot of flexibility in the type of insulation you use that can help improve your energy efficiency. If you haven't purchased your furnace or your water heater yet, also quite a bit of flexibility in making sure you get an efficient furnace that gives you those points in that Title 24 analysis report. The Pellegrinis are here tonight, they were fairly far along in construction and have been really interested in the program and making the program work for them, and it certainly required some re-managing of the type of insulation they're going to use and the things that are, that are going to help them meet the 35%. But, one of the other big benefits is Gillaran Energy Management provides these specialized inspections called HERS inspections, and they go out and make sure that your insulation is done above and beyond code, that your new furnace system doesn't leak, that it exceeds the standard building code, and all those things give you points in the Title 24. So, for a number of homes, getting that 35% looks like really high-quality heat retentive, or heat pretentiive insulation, high-quality windows, a very efficient furnace, and a very efficient, most likely tankless water heater, and then with those HERS inspections, they're exceeding the code, or exceeding the program requirements. Like, gives them a lot of flexibility to qualify, so we'll be good about that.
So, I guess the next question is, is that a $25,000 grant, you know, which is probably the majority of the residents will be shooting for, and it sounds as if the Pellegrinis are maybe not there, but they hope to be there at the 35%?
Well, certainly they are, yeah.
What did that cost them?
I can't speak...
I mean, are they, I mean, are they spending $50,000 more to get a $25,000 grant, or are they recouping, you know, the investment, you know, with that grant?
We sat down with Gillaran and tried to make this cost-neutral. So, of course, it's going to depend on the size of the home, you know, what the design of your home is, but in general, we aim to have that $25,000 cover all the costs associated going, from going to that 35%.
And, I guess my last question is, if we do, and my clients are considering solar panels, and I guess the only design issue is trying to get as many solar panels as you can based on the exposure. In your knowledge of, in your understanding of this program, would solar panels just be a no-brainer and get you over the 35% almost alone?
So, the solar panel, the solar panels themselves are a fairly substantial sustainability feature of a new home. The Title 24 report is sort of quirky in that it really just wants to calculate the efficiency of your insulation and your furnace and your windows, and it doesn't really look into where your energy comes from. So, meeting the 35% threshold is really that first step, and then saying, hey, we also think solar panels make a lot of sense, and the grant of $45,000 or $65,000 should be, like Aaron mentioned, cost-neutral in covering that. And, yes, the hope is it becomes a no-brainer for homeowners to do it.
So, in your recommendation now is that if a homeowner has a design and hasn't started construction, this is the opportune time for them to talk to the consultant and go over what measures they can take?
Yeah, absolutely, the earlier the better.
Rico?
Thank you. Very quick, I know we're talking about a potential 1.2 million, and it is anticipated to utilize the trust, but I don't believe that that is a guarantee, even though it seems it should be, because in your first report, the director mentioned it was Global Green, PG&E wanted that, it was conditional. I want to commend the staff in the sense that there was high administrative costs, and you were diligent in looking at that, and also having ownership, and us having the ability to be a part of the process and signing off, and I think that's commendable for you looking out for that, and I think this is a better option. But, with that said, if this resolution passes, I would ask, or suggestion to my colleagues, is that this go-forward, once the city manager has maybe reached out to review this expenditure with the trust for verification for it to be utilized. And, that's to the manager, if she has any thought on that.
So, I'm sorry, reach out to who?
Anybody you'd like. No, no, Aaron.
To the trustee?
Yes, the trustee, just for verification that these funds can be utilized for this. Since obviously there was a concern with Global Green, with PG&E, they had to have them, and they didn't, for whatever reasons, we felt otherwise because of the administrative and oversight.
So, I would give you some preliminary comments and then ask the city attorney to weigh in. The way the trust is set up and the way it's being utilized and the specific language in the trust does not require the trustee to pre-approve or to render an opinion about whether an expenditure properly conforms to the detailed language of the trust. The trust is deliberately, flexibly, and broadly constructed in order that the city has the ability to take the necessary actions and make the necessary expenditures to, in the city's opinion, properly rebuild and restore the community as in the aftermath and from the effects of the explosion and fire. The trustee has, to date, participated by... The trustee has, to date, participated by reviewing expenditures and evaluating that they have been properly documented and that they conform to the intent of the trust after the fact. So, I think what you hear me expressing is a little bit of hesitancy about going down a path that says the trustee will make those determinations as opposed to the city making those determinations.
That's not what I'm referencing. Okay, I'm sorry.
Sure, I'm sorry about that. So, I think this is, this program is akin to the program that, there are several programs the city's already implemented to waive building permit fees and so on, and then recoup those, those monies from the trust. That's really the, the same thing as, as a grant program essentially to the residents. So, in, in that situation, what the city did is present those expenses to the trust with a certification that they are not covered by insurance and otherwise meet the terms of the trust, and on that authority, the trustee has authorized the distribution. And that's the way the trust has been set up to operate. So, I don't see these, the grant program really is any different as a waiver of a, of a fee program that's already been approved.
And the only reason I bring this up, and I understand the way it's worked, was just only because in the initial report, it was that we needed to use Global Green, that's what PG&E said. We've chosen a different path. So, I'm a trust but verify person, and so that's what I just want to make sure. If we're being, if I'm being told by the city manager and city attorney it meets the qualifications, and therefore it will be granted by the trustee, then, then fine. But that's why I'm asking.
Any other comments? Michael?
Through the chair. One point I wanted to add on to Councilmember O'Connell's suggestion about the solar panels, I, I think it's a good idea to try to push as much as, as we can. In the end, I, I do think that it would be a huge benefit to the homeowners. So, one, one thing I would suggest that we also look at is maybe building into the requirement for the grants that they not necessarily use panels, but make sure that the infrastructure is in place. And I think that that might be a much lower cost, lower impact requirement that would clear a huge hurdle if they were to add the solar panels in sometime down the road. The, the other comment I wanted to make is that it, it appears from, from what I'm seeing that the, the contractor that we're, that's going to do most of the, the legwork here won't be administering the grants, and that, I assume, is going to fall on your department, Aaron.
The city manager.
Okay, okay. And, and I, I noticed that there were, there wasn't any cost associated with that administration or, or an estimate of how much time it would take, what, what percentage of an FTE would be allocated to that, and it might be good if we figure that out and, and make sure that that's also compensated at, at some point.
Absolutely, that's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Irene?
Thank you. I appreciate your, your comment about the solar, the infrastructure for that. My only concern is, or not a concern, but then if we do that, which is a fine idea, then do we also extend the time that the grant could be administered? So, say they build the house, they've got the infrastructure, and then six months later they say, "Okay, we do want to put the solar paneling in," would they still be eligible for the grant? I don't want to take it away from them if they're just, you know, if it's six months or a year down the road. It's, there's, is there a, I didn't notice one, but is there a time that they can no longer apply for the grant if the house is already built? Or should we put that in there, that they have up to a year to add the solar panels or something like that?
We could have that, I, I had not thought of that angle before. But what we had assumed that they would no longer be eligible for grant funds once they received their final, final approval of their building permit, so once they, you know, move into their home and there's no longer an active building permit.
Oh, well, see, that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know that's what I'm saying.
You know, she's cackling, so I, should, I think we should add some time for it. Can we add up to a year?
I'm sure we could, we definitely could build that into the program guidelines.
I, I think that's would be reasonable.
Anyone else?
I think, well, caveat to that is that, do we have, is, does, is there an ordinance for the Glenview area as far as taking advantage of the, the, the services that they're receiving now, which is no payment of fees and things?
We do, we do have a time limit on it. I believe it's five years within the master fee schedule. So, I mean, we could take that into consideration too, but the solar, so if it was adding solar panels later, the building permit fee associated with it, it's a pretty small, I think it's a, we, we limit to $125 or something.
Yeah, because if you have a five-year limit on someone building their home and then, you know, not, you know, and then recouping building fees or whatever, that's still going to, you're going to have to have, you know, some, some reserve in the trust, you know, to-
Correct.
-to compensate for that.
Okay.
As long as they're same owner.
Anything else? Just two quick comments. You mentioned about trying to be cost neutral, you're talking about cost neutral right at the onset, right? And then you haven't mentioned the, what are going to be huge savings in energy efficiency-
Exactly.
Over the, over the long period of time.
Cost neutral from a short-term standpoint. Long-term, it's a net positive for the homeowner, absolutely.
Very net positive. The other thing is, when you talked about the trust paying for this, or the trust, you know, qualifying this particular thing, can't think of any other organization off the top of my head that, that's acting like PG&E as far as trying to get energy efficiency out there and offering their own programs, so I can't see where there's any issue with that, with that trust paying for that.
And, and that's the reason why solar has slowed, is because the incentives aren't out there.
Yeah, a lot of the state incentives.
And PG&E was leading the way on that.
Right.
Many energy efficiency.
Okay, great. So, do you need an introduction to the resolution?
We need that.
I'd be happy to do that.
There's changes that you want to add in?
Oh, excuse me, and including the infrastructure part and the extended for a year, they could be eligible for up to a year to add on the solar panels, or I guess anything.
Say it again?
If, if we include putting in the infrastructure for the solar panels, but not necessarily purchasing the solar panels, then we need to add the year, at least a year. But is there, you know, extension to, to apply for the grants, right?
For the solar panel aspect of it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, should we add, should it just be up to a year, and there might be other things that they could add later?
Why wouldn't it be any, why wouldn't be anything within the grant, you know, to qualify with the grant, whether it's solar panels or tankless water heaters or whatever? There might, there might be someone that builds a home that didn't get the grant, didn't reach 35 percent, and then-
And then changes it.
A year later, a year later, they take some certain measures that gets them at least to 35 percent, then they would probably qualify for 20 percent.
Right, exactly. So, don't, no, don't limit it to the solar panels, anything within a year of construction or within pulling the permit. I would think so.
Do we have any issue with that extension?
From a practical standpoint, the solar panels are the ones that probably make the most sense to allow that extension.
Yeah, the rest is going to be done in-
Because mostly, yeah, the rest of the Title 24 calculations, that really goes into things that after you sheet rock, it's really difficult to do.
Oh, okay.
So, our recommendation would most likely be just isolate that extension to the solar panel aspect of it, because that's something you could just put on your, your roof later easily.
Okay. And you could, we can always come back and revisit this if something comes up.
Correct.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that. So, that, Carol, sorry. So, we're, we're adding the infrastructure for, allowing for the infrastructure for the solar paneling and putting in a, a year extension for, applying for the grant for installing solar panels. And with that, I'll introduce the resolution.
You're introducing two resolutions.
One resolution.
Are you going to do one at a time?
Oh, okay, all right. There's two.
Yes, one at a time.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
And then I'll introduce the resolution to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Gillaran Energy Management for green building consultation.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?